It is now seven ten on May eleventh. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Moni Village Board. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't want to do anybody for invocation tonight. Roll call please.
Trustee Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Present.
Horn.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Gracy.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Here.
I'm right here though. Trustee Gray, you're right. Open the public agenda items. Come to podium, give your name and address. Take this for agenda items. Next, we have the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. On.
Second.
Raisick. And Horn. Roll call please.
Discussion please. Just discussion real quick.
Sure.
I made a lot of votes on here, but as far as if I was here or present or absent or not on here, we would just note that.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
As far as being present or absent, I'm neither, but I made a lot of votes.
He's missing on the roll call.
I'm missing on.
What was that? For the minutes.
For the minutes.
Understood. Do we need to correct it?
Yeah, I'll go back through and see.
Was that one day? I think you were late one day because of work, you got stuck or something.
No, because it clearly says here trustee Pop showed up at six thirty-five, six thirty-eight. But when we go through the roll call, I know where to be found, but I'm making my votes.
I'll check, I'll check. I heard.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Well, that'll be corrected and accepted that part way.
Yep, please, thank you.
Roll call please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gracy.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Thank you. Come, Mr. Clark, do you have a. Two things. I was reminded that the Chamber of Commerce, which is the organization that officiates over the Ralph Falen Award, has discovered what we've all known for years, that Mr. Moni, who's in our presence here, Mr. Gresbeck, was the recipient of this year's Ralph Falen Award. And I believe trustee Pop has the award he'd like to present to Mr. Gresbeck.
I just wanted to say for the public and everyone here that I'll start out saying when I came to Moni, I wasn't in the office two hours signing the papers to move in. And this gentleman was registering me to vote because I came to the Cook County. That is very indicative of what Sid's done. In fact, that's only eleven years ago. You've been doing things in here for eighteen to twenty years from my recollection of the.
Sixty.
Sixty, okay, there I go. I usually love to exaggerate, I guess. But Sid does so much that it was overwhelming. There was, there was no choice when his name was put in. And I'm very proud, Sid, to give you the Ralph Falen Award, which is the strangest award I've ever seen, but it is for his recognition for all his volunteer work.
Thank you.
Come on, son, you gotta say something. Come on, turn to work for our face to face your parents.
I just want to say, living in Moni and receiving the benefits and the service that Moni gives, I feel totally fair that I give back as much as I can. Betty and I are very happy to be members of Moni. We enjoy it very much and thank you for the award, I appreciate it.
Betty, I told him they should have given it to you. So, this is on final form. This is under my report for summary of property tax rebate program. Not quite in final form yet. Just wanted to read it to you as a little bit of a draft. As many of us were aware, the roads in Moni were in dire need of attention. There hadn't been a significant road project in the village on streets in about twenty years. I think the last project I talked to public horse about was actually Cork Street. That was, and he's thinking that was at least twenty years ago. Now, Governor's Highway, obviously, we know that's a state project, this is state road. But this has to do with village on streets. We still had quite a few stone lanes. Additionally, we were woefully substandard on our ADA compliance. As such, the board deemed it necessary to issue bonds to pay for the nearly seven million dollars of road and sidewalk improvements that we needed. However, through the diligence and cost-cutting efforts of the board, the staff, we have done some preliminary research. Trustee Horn, finance director, Bolinger, myself, have done some preliminary research and are taking steps to implement a property tax rebate, tentatively as follows. And as follows, that would be this. And again, this is just not a, not a final, final form. And just to clarify, this only pertains to the portion of the property tax bill that is of the village itself. You know, we can't rebate school street, you know, things like that. And it's not to say that we're going to be able to refund or rebate the entire amount of the municipal portion, but we're going to do the best we can. The goal, I believe, Darryl, that we've targeted is the amount that the levy impacted somebody's home property taxes is what we're targeting for. So if, as a result of the levy, if your home property tax went up two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, we're going to get as close to that as possible and try to rebate that through this program. So it's going to be based on a formula percentage, there's going to be some things in play there. So some of the criteria that we've worked out here must be an owner-activated home in which they currently reside, property owner living in a single-family home, a town home, residential condo, within a building that he or she owns and is entitled to a refund. Basically, it's got to be residential, it's got to be zone residential, and it's got to be owner-activated. That's kind of the first criteria. Owners of single-family homes, townhomes and condo units who received a refund once they approved their residency in the home with a current LA driver's license or state ID. Owners of. Proof of payment of the Will County property tax for that year. Darryl, there's a couple of things on here, I'm trying to make sure that we've got this right here because. Oh, you're, yeah, okay, I'm, I got it, sorry. The other thing you had to do is make sure that they were current on all their obligations to the village for their, you know, utility water, trash, whatever kind of things like that, as well as they had their vehicle stickers and things of that sort, which were all their obligations that were expected of them. So basically, this is a positive reward for people that are investing in our community. And I think the other thing you mentioned, Darryl, I'm not sure if I, I don't see it on here specifically, is that it would, they would have had to have been the owner of the property for the entire tax year.
That's correct, yes.
So if there's a transition, we're not going to try to split hairs or who gets what from, you know, change, you know, change of ownership or whatever like that. You've got to be the owner for the entire year for that to, to be applicable. Darryl's got all sorts of special criteria that you're going to, you know, use to make sure that everything's done right and everything else. Anyhow, as more information becomes available, we're looking to have all applications and support submitted to the Village Hall by December of 2016, December sixteenth of 2016, which would mean you'd have to have all your supporting documents, proof of payments and proof of ownership and all the other kind of things like that. Some of that will become a repeat method once, once it's in place because a lot of things aren't going to change every year, other than proof of payment. Girls in the office check to make sure that they're current, they weren't, you know, they had vehicle stickers all the time that they were supposed to and they didn't have any problems with water, trash bills, things like that. A check will be mailed, once they're all pro, put in the system, Darryl. And, and he, he's asking for, from December to. Basically, he's asking for two to three months to verify and validate and review any other issues that may come into play. Typically, they're, they're paying their tax bills by at least October.
October, yes.
Yeah, so if they paid it by October, they've got, since the time they paid it in October, even if they, a month later or something like that, so all they get paid by the sixteenth of December and they submit it to the village. Then ideally, they'll have a check for a second week of March is the way, is the way of working. And this is our way of positively reinforcing those who are invested in living in Moni while continuing to find better ways to serve residents while maintaining balance budget. So, that's, that's kind of that in a nutshell. It's something we're trying to figure out how to, how to employ, it's never been done here before. And we've taken some notes from other communities that have tried this and seem to have a modest amount of success with it. But, you know, provided we can get our budget where we need it to be and everything else, you know, some of the other things we're dealing with, you know, that's our goal. You know, we may have to throttle some of that back based on things that we run into on other issues pertaining to budget expectations, but I think it's a great initiative. So Doug, I appreciate your help with that, obviously, as a finance trustee. Darryl, I know that, you know, you've done research with other communities as well after it was brought up. So certainly, this needs more approval, but I'm just throwing it out there as a consideration for, you know, it, it would, so I don't know, any feedback, comments, questions?
Chris and I lived in Prestwood for, I think, seven years where they were doing this, back before we moved to Moni. And it was a very popular program, they'd been doing it for over twenty years and they have since quit doing it because the revenue wasn't there. But it does allow, we found, it seemed like a lot of people would take that money and reinvest it in their homes, which is, I think, part of what you'd like to see people do.
Sure.
And they had, it was very similar in this respect, that you had to be there for the whole year. And the percentage was year-to-year of a change based upon budget where, where they were. But it was a very popular one, it encouraged people to move to the community because of that. So from that perspective, I think it's got some merit. How would we approach the people who live in both of these, I'm just curious?
It wouldn't have any effect on them.
Because they're not homeowners.
Correct.
We don't pay for this.
Right. There's one, it's one big parcel.
Yeah.
And, and the premise is that if there's rental income being derived from that parcel, then it would be excluded for that reason. Darryl was researching some considerations if, for some reason, I think DJ owns a house that some lives in, or sometimes there's situations where, and, and Darryl's made a review to see if there's a, like a good policy to deal with this, whereas if somebody, and I always tell Darryl, you know, the, the point is, is if there's a way to deal with it also where somebody was, because often a house might be in a trust, it may not actually be in the name of the person himself that lives there. So there's certain ones that you've got to deal with, Larry will give us some guidance on that as well. But there's times where somebody will buy a home because somebody isn't creditworthy, you know, at times, so they'll assist them with that, even though they're not really receiving rent, it's just they're cosigned or a source of property. So we're going to see if there's any way to accommodate that as well, otherwise, yeah.
If I may, Mayor, I've been involved in a program like this for about twenty years, been very successful. I, I believe you may have to declare a surplus. I think that's important, that it's declared a surplus, so that way you don't give the impression that it's going to be an annual thing, it's got to be reviewed on an annual basis. And the one other thing that we found to be helpful, a cutoff date.
Right.
If people don't use a cutoff date, it goes back in the corporate fund.
Right.
Because you'll find out, usually they're pretty good, they're, they're the first date, but there's always that one or two last people, you've got to have a cutoff date so you don't carry it into the next year's budget.
Yeah, well, I think it's part of what Darryl was looking for this, especially in our first year doing it. He wants to give people enough time to make sure they're aware of it, so he's doing it middle of December. And then give himself three months almost to, to, to make sure he's got all this in place to, to, to deal with that. And we're, I think we're, we're estimating, and here's the thing, we have no choice but to levy in order to get the roads done, but if there's a way that we can find out through better budgeting internally, that we can then relieve that burden on the homeowners or at least a portion of, you know, the ones that are owner-occupied and such, I think that's a great incentive.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're, we're working through the nuances, talked to other communities that have done it, learned from that. Larry, you get your experience with that as well, so that's great. Any other feedback?
I think this will come at a time too when not a lot of folks are realizing why their property taxes went up. This would be a good explanation and us doing our jobs here in this group and making sure that they understand it and, but, you know, we understand it and what they're going through too, and it shows good faith for sure on our part to them.
Okay, so if, with the board's consent, I'll, I'll have Darryl continue to move forward with trying to, to work out the details of this as an administrative policy, I guess. Can I give a roll call on that, I guess?
What's the roll call for?
Affirmation of a. An internal policy, administrative policy for property tax rebate program? I guess it'd be the way to describe it.
Annual, annual.
Yes.
And you're the only one that copied that, that's not another.
I, I, it is still, it's such a rough draft, I mean, we have scrolls all over the site, so. So we'll, we'll, once we know that this is, I, you don't want to go off the street with this and then find out that he hasn't won for some reason. So we'll, we'll get that. We'll get that worked out. Or I'm sorry, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the.
Holston has stated.
To move forward with the.
Consent. Seven ten, ma'am.
Yeah. Consent on this.
Do you want to see, obviously, when I see the final draft.
Hundred percent.
Just to move forward, that's all we're asking. Seven ten.
I would make that a motion. Trustee Pop?
I'll say it.
Trustee, where is it? Roll call please.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gracy.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Montes, do you have anything to do with your reports? Under the official report? I know we had our committee meeting tonight, so I don't know if you guys have anything specifically, if you just chime in, or did anybody have anything?
I have one short thing from Mary Josie left morning today, with bated breath. Don't, everybody remember that this weekend, the Friday and Saturday is the Village Wide Garage Sales from, I think it's eight to two. So there, there's a post, a posting of the map available in Village Hall and online if anybody needs them.
Correct.
I've got two small things, one of these. As a reminder, on Friday, May twentieth, the Moni Police Department will be at Dunkin' Donuts for Cop on Top from six AM to two PM. So stop by, say hi, please donate to the Special Olympics Illinois. And also on that note, tip of Cop's shoes raised a total of four thousand one hundred dollars, with the full total being sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars raised so far for the Illinois Special Olympics.
Agreed. Chief, your goal was to break twenty thousand this year, correct? Yeah. And we just, we just, to me, you know, to go for the kind of, you know, half on top. Good, good. I know I was interviewed by nothing done the other day, Curgent said that won't be a problem, so.
Just three things on economic.
Yep, absolutely.
Dollar general update, we're still waiting on the developer to submit a list of eligible TIF expenses. Once he does that, then the village will begin to negotiate and prepare a development agreement with them. The former owner of the former Mitsubishi store has begun selling bars, off-road vehicles at the facility, and another exciting product, I'm told, is slingshot. I have no idea what that is. Someone said Batmobile, but whatever, they are selling that, and they're going to be looking for local incentives as well, so we will have some more information on that soon. And Fitness Premier had their grand opening last Saturday, May seventh.
It's a busy day last week, we had baseball, had your opening day parade, you got kind of rained out for a while, so if you, trustees, if you have a little glitter on your seats, the. The six U softball. Actually, baseball softball already invaded the Village Hall's shelter from the rain Saturday morning, but the little girls had tutus that were glittery, so thought we'd get help cleaned up, but you might still have a little bit of glitter on your pants. Fitness Premier, that was great. And, yeah, so, thank you guys. Anybody else for official report?
Thank you, Mayor, I got wide out. One item for the board's consideration, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a local public agency agreement with respect to roadway improvements. I believe this is for work done, it's going to be done, at the Gypsy Trail, Moni Manhattan Old, we're participating with the government in the cost of this project. I believe DJ's taking a look at it. We need this authorization executed tonight by the mayor and clerk Hager, so we can proceed accordingly.
Any questions, Rob, this? I just, we're sorry, number four.
I'll read that motion.
Second.
Second. Gonzalez and Holston, discussion? Sure. This is the, is this the realignment they're talking about here? This has to do with our request, remember, this, this is a manager's request for additional funding and the.
Create funding for the Gypsy Trail project.
We, we have to declare, we were going to.
Oh, okay.
We were going to do the managing fund portion of that.
This was brought up at a meeting, which I did, to. Sure, maybe sure enough.
Hey, yeah. Yeah, I think, what was the total amount we actually were able to secure from additional funding for the state approval, under one point, barely have the numbers.
So we're here at one point five.
One point five million additional funds that we were able to get from.
Well, the, the announcement will be made at the end of.
Okay, so we're. But this is tied to that. All right, we got a motion, we got a second. Roll call please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Resolution number? I guess it is a resolution.
Twenty sixteen dash seven.
Twenty sixteen what?
Yes, seven.
It's on ahead, man. Okay. Anything on the road business? Anything on the new business? Open the public non-agenda items. Come to podium, if you will give us your name and address, please, and one more comment in three months. Come on, Betty, you're not going to get up and tell us how wonderful Sid is?
You already know that.
Well, Sid's going to come and tell, tell us how wonderful he is.
Sid Gresbeck, two five six five four Firestone, Cal Vista. I've heard conversations concerning trucks and fines and so forth. Just while the meeting was going on, a truck went by, noise hall, it should have been there, too big. I noticed an increase too on Wall Center Road with the new plant that's going in, going to our schools, big trucks, shouldn't be there. I'm the transportation business, says my trucks go to area, they shouldn't be in, this should be fine. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Bailey?
It's a non-agenda item.
I'm sorry.
Don't. It's not a, it's not a non-agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Off by the rules.
Oh, we had the agenda items at the beginning. We have non-agenda now, so if you got something you want to say, it's ten thousand, ten million.
Well, the tax rebate.
Okay.
Yes, you want. Can't talk about that now, Frank.
Sure, you can come on. We, and just so you understand, at the beginning of our meeting, we limit the opening comments to being those items that all pertain to agenda items. At this point, it can be not just non-agenda item, it can be agenda, it can be non-agenda or whatever else at this point, it just, we're trying to get the ones that are pertinent to the meeting out of the way first.
Bill Bailey, sixty-fourth through fourth quarter. Just with this whole tax rebate thing, one, we're not real happy with how the tax went up.
True.
But ask for some information, have a CDF, that's another thing. Now you're asking us as village citizens to prove all these things. It's sort of like a rebate, it's what it is. Pay most rebates, don't pay. Most rebates, you look at it, any type of rebate, they know it. Manufacturers know that, that most people won't send their rebate form in. Okay, so there's going to be a lot of people that aren't going to go through all this stuff and get helped on it all. And are you going to change the tax rate so we don't have to go through this every year? We raised taxes twenty-seven percent.
Well, we did actually raise taxes twenty-seven percent, we implement, as we were going to implement a lot, there was a twenty-year levy that was pertaining to the road project. We had no choice but to implement that. That was the only way we're going to be able to get the money now to deal with those issues. But as we continue to manage our budget efficiently, which is our goal and will continue to be our goal, we're going to do the best we can to provide as much of an offset to that, but we have to have that there. For instance, TIF two, sorry. You guys remember when we implemented TIF two is before us, obviously, but there was an expectation that it, it was a bond-backed implementation that ultimately had a net effect on the residents of the community of none at this point, thus far, because it hasn't been told, that note hasn't been told. In this case here, we, we have no choice but to implement the, the levy is implemented, that is just the way it works in order to deal with road projects. But as much as we can, we are going to try to reduce or not, not reduce, we can't reduce that amount because that amount has already been established, that's just in terms of a bonded, bonded agreement. But as much as we can, we're going to try to find a way to manage our finances here better to, to provide it back to you. Now, let's not give them back to everybody.
No, I mean, what's going to happen to businesses? They got this tax relief also, correct?
Exactly.
I own a business, we just did this stunt, why would I come here?
Stunt?
This, whatever, okay? There's some issues here. I mean, do you want to know the truth in taxation law?
Sure.
I don't have all my information here yet, I've asked for three different information and I might get that.
Sure. You're willing to turn this on.
I don't have the information, I'm going to add it, I make sure I don't sell it all.
Sure.
And right now, don't have them all, okay? But I just heard this, and I'm going to have to go through this whole process to prove I'm here. My house is in a trust, my own trust. Am I going to have an issue with that? But right now, I went through a mortgage company, ridiculous. So I'm just not real happy with this, I'm not happy with the way it was done, okay? I hope those residents do come back and get their money back, but the odds are against it. It's a rebate program, odds are against it. You guys get ninety-five percent coming back, I know you're thinking about Prestwood, most of that money came back from the off-track.
That's what the residents of Crestwood, you're correct.
Yep.
And you are correct, and we did not have to file for it, it was automatically done.
So, you guys know how to live here, you know all these people who live here. Why do they have to go through six steps so far to prove that they're living here and paid their taxes?
This, this is a, again, we're not saying we're the smartest and brightest people in the entire state. We're just saying that in our efforts to try to implement something, we're looking at other communities that have done this and done it well, and are still doing it. And I think one of the closest towns to us that is doing this is New Olympics, and that is actually almost boiling plate, some of the stuff that they've implemented. So the expectation to prove ownership in a trust, it's, we all know, that's a.
We're not talking about the trust, it's just, that word just ticked me off because of the mortgage company stuff.
No, it's just.
Okay, but I'm just getting back to, I've been here twenty-three years.
Sure.
I've got a fund, all this documentation.
It's not that much.
It doesn't matter, it should be none. It should be none. Right? Obviously, that's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I just ask a question, though, as long as I'm just about that? So it sounded like you were, had two separate points there. One, you are against the way or that it's being done, but you would be for it if there was less steps, which, which?
No, I want my money back because basically the rate that was increased puts against truth in taxation law, okay? That's, that's part of the law, read truth in taxation, read the law, it's over five percent, that's one thing. Having citizens go through all this stuff to prove that they paid this tax, you're going to give it back to them. Give me this, give me some steps, it's just like a mortgage. I got to prove this, I got to prove my taxes, I got to prove, I understand that, I'm dealing with mortgage company, I'm dealing with bank. Everybody, everybody got to pay.
I have to prove that I live here even to register my children for school.
That's fine. That's great, let's not even go down that subject, because kids that earn it at school, let's not even go down that road. That's a big road. Don't get me started on the schools. Okay?
I could agree with all my life.
Let's just stick to this subject. I've got to prove that I paid taxes, I paid this, I paid my water bill, I paid all that to get my rebate. You guys went six or seven steps here.
First of all, let me, let me draw.
That you would be responsible for one, you just have to prove that you paid your tax bill. Mr. Darryl has everything else online that he can check.
Correct.
Everything else is here, that lives here in this Village Hall, all you have to do is bring in your tax bill.
Right, so.
That's a lot different than what state.
No.
Okay, but why do I hear an allegation that there's a violation of truth in taxation or something of that sort? I want to confront that, or at least address it, if I should say.
Well, then, wait, let's, I was addressing when I had my information.
I can address it right now, Mr. Bailey.
No, I want to see my information first, then we address it.
I'm going to address right now, this is the main. You can sit there and listen, or you can plug your ears, I don't care, I want to address it. So the rest of the board and all of us here understand this. Truth in taxation has to do with expectations of the way that taxes are levied. Larry, if you'd like to address the legal basis by which we implement levy, which is a separation. Unfortunately, our property tax bills, just so you're all aware of it when you look at them, they don't delineate between a levy that is implemented by our budgeted issues and everything else versus a bond that is issued. So when we have bonds, and we have multiple bonds out on the village, those bonds all go into the pool, and it shows up as one, maybe two line items on your property tax bill. So you're not seeing a separation out from our compliance with truth of taxation, along with the bond that is now introduced into the total number that you're seeing, and you're blaming, blaming the overall budget on that, in reality, it's pertaining to capital expenditure, as Darryl mentioned earlier tonight. Larry, what were the compliance issues that we had when it came to the levy, because I know we're complying on the.
Correct. If we're over, you're correct, Mr. Bailey, if we're over a certain amount, we got to have a public hearing. And for the last ten years, we've never been over that amount. It's a hundred and five percent, and Darryl and our auditors review that before we actually go out for the levy. So we, there's a double-check system before we do that. And with respect to the, I understand your concerns, I guess, with respect to supplying information for rebates, but I think the intent is to make sure the people who actually are eligible receive them. A lot of villages request utility bills. Like you said, you're concerned about the land trust, we just said bring up the utility bill to make sure the actual owner. There's been some situations where you have investment property taking advantage of it, and the more legitimate people who receive the rebate, the more money will be available. So it's done quite a bit, done it for twenty years for one village. And I'd be surprised if it's less than five percent, who don't take advantage of it, work it out very quickly.
So Larry, regarding when we implemented the levy, you were part of that process. I'm sorry, not the levy, but the bond.
Yes, sir.
The six point seven, meaning a total worth bond debt service.
Yes, sir.
Nearly seven million dollars. What were the fundamentals that we had to adhere to in regards to the public hearing meetings and all that sort of thing?
Well, with respect to the bond issue, we didn't need a public hearing because we're a home role unit, so the village has the right to issue general obligation bonds. It was properly on the agenda. If you're a non-home role, you got to go off a referendum, we're home role. So the village has the automatic right to issue GO bonds, which we haven't done in probably, off the top of my head, fifteen years. And once those bonds were issued, we used Baird as our underwriter, they were filed with the county, we were in compliance. But we technically don't need a public hearing with the bonds. It was on the agenda, I believe, on at least two or three occasions, because Mr. Gavin from Baird was present. He showed us the numbers, I think we felt comfortable with it. But again, if it was a GO bond in your non-home role, then you got to go off a referendum. And we're home role, so we have that right to do that.
And just, we're reminding everybody here, I mean, we all recognize the need, our streets were in dire need of being addressed. And we still had streets or lanes that were, and nobody else would call them alleys, but they're, you see alleys in city Chicago, they're shit in central areas. And so there were things that needed to be addressed that hadn't been addressed in twenty-plus years. She'd only been there.
Almost thirteen.
And, you know, I think court service is part of the last project.
Last big project.
Yeah. And so, and again, I don't think anybody on the, on the board was gleeful about borrowing money. I mean, I remember how much turmoil that was for all of us to just sit here and have to digest this and realize our responsibility to have to deal with, you know, we have an obligation, we had so many people complaining, we were losing opportunities for business and everything else as a result of, I mean, when we had the bond agency come in and they just didn't drive through our town, there was like, you better be borrowing this money for your roads because it, that's what it asked for. Basically, that's how I'm going to describe it.
You're right, Mayor, in fact, Mr. Bailey, in the OS with the bond issue, it's specifically limited what we could spend that money on. It was streets, roads, some infrastructure, nothing is extravagant. And when the underwriter came in, like the mayor indicated, they said it's a legitimate reason for spending. And secondarily, we had bond council involved, and one of the better bond councils around, as far as I'm concerned, and it was legitimate. We had, again, three or four meetings regarding the situation. We had a conference call with the underwriter, plus the insurance agency. And they saw the condition of, as the mayor indicated, there were some roads that needed repair and this and that stuff. And we are very limited, we can't spend that money for any other reason other than what's in the OS, and that's, that's what we're doing.
I do want to apologize, I haven't stated, I've forgotten how we had to do it at Crestwood. We did have to take our utility bill and our proof of taxes into the Village Hall, just those two things, along with ID. And that's all we had to do, and they, you know, very efficient, very quick, five minutes, we were done. And we did that every year with no, no problem, but, but, you know, as you say, it's a surplus, and you do have to declare that surplus, it's not guaranteed.
Sure. And what's guaranteed, again, a surplus every year, depends on what, with the state budget even. You know, we don't know how much of the municipal portion of the income tax and things like that, there's still a lot of that is potentially up in the air for years forward. So, you know, we're doing the best we can. You know, and I, I'm proud of all of you guys for helping us maintain that kind of a budget, and for staff to, to, I mean, it's not just Darryl. I mean, it's, you know, when I was talking to Darryl and Doug about this, we're like, we're just going to have to figure out how to do a little bit more with us because, you know, I know there's going to be, you know, some frustrations because of misunderstandings or whatever else, and we got to do what we can to help you. You know, so, that being said, I do appreciate your comments, Mr. Bailey. But, you know, as much as if you start talking about schools, I don't know.
To get this.
It'd be real quick to be all over that, when I start hearing somebody even imply that there's anything less than honorable about our efforts, I want to make sure that, like, okay, I understand there's perception and there's reality, but I want to make sure I can, you know, address the reality if I can. So, thank you for sharing your concerns, and as you get the information from, that you requested, if you have additional questions, probably stop, and we'll be glad to, or through those workshops. Anybody else from the public? Noran?
On a lighter.
What, you should go golfing next door tomorrow?
No. Not for the green, thank you, Derek. Three weeks, four max, we're supposed to be aerated, season's end, everything. Mark Stokes, five seven one eight, seven o'clock. I hope there's a meeting in here, because that would be used to go to all our state, our clubhouse, just taken. We had Manufactured Housing Action, which is a national organization in here. We had Mo-Hite in here, which is manufactured homeowners section in Illinois. And it was a good, good meeting, Manufactured Housing went down to PLS's meeting on Tuesday and expressed our concerns. Let the mayor king, gave a nice talk, want to thank you. It's nice to see, you know, let other communities see that, you know, village boards do get behind this stuff. Woman from Utah gave a talk, and she's having a heck of a time with their local board, trying to get some issues, you know, taken care of with their communities. Just want to thank you, everybody appreciated.
Did it really go to the St. Paul's report shop afterwards?
Everybody went, I mean, eleven of us went.
Yeah, right. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Hopefully you guys didn't get any glittery at the second one to the other from the little kids up here.
How many is that there?
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Executive session, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Nothing for executive session, time is now eight, sorry, seven fifty-three. I'm attending a motion board adjournment. Oran and?
Second.
Raisick? We'll call this.
Trustee, raise it.
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.